Okay. Good evening. Looks like we have a quorum. I will call the committee of the whole meeting to order for July 27, 2022. And our first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
No place I'd rather be.
I'll mark you as present. Alder Aratafrada.
Yeah.
Alder Gerhart indicated she will be late. Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler has indicated he will be absent. You have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Motion made by Alder.
Whatever my name is.
Thought I'd throw one back at you. Thank you. The June 22, 2002 draft minutes. Discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, motion carries. Public appearances for non-agenda items. We have no one in chambers and no one on Zoom. Moving on, item six, agenda items, 6A, discussion of municipal budgeting and budget priorities. Misty Dodge. Misty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Randy. So tonight, we're here to kick off the operating budget process. So we did adopt a CIP last night. Congratulations on getting that done efficiently. But now we're going to start talking about operating budget because there's nothing we like more than to talk about numbers two nights in a row. So a lot of this information is stuff we had talked about when I did a similar presentation for the CIP, as well as a lot of it similar to last year. And since all of you were on the council last year as well, I'm going to cruise through a lot of the terminology and things and focus really just on what's different or things that I want to point out for the upcoming budget process. And of course, if there's questions, feel free to stop me at any time. So we're going to talk about some background and context, the budget constraints that we have. I have to talk about structural deficits every time. Then there's going to be some structural changes and some concerns I have about the 2023 budget as we're going into it. We'll talk about the budget process and next steps. And then at the end, there's an opportunity for all of council to have a discussion and share what your priorities are for the upcoming 2023 budget so that the mayor can hear that before he puts together his proposed budget. So city finance and budgeting, a lot of this is terminology, so I will just click through it. This chart here, so this is the property tax levy. So this is the total amount that we collect from all of our property owners in property taxes for city purposes, and it's split by fund. So the bottom bar is the general fund. This is where the bulk of our operations are paid out of. The green bar and the purple bar are debt and capital projects. So that's really what we focused on during the CIP process. And then the red bar and the orange bar are library and FAT TV. We'll talk about those during the operating budget as well. And then the top light blue bar, this is the TID amount. So we'll talk a little bit later about how the TID factors into property tax bills. But the fact that that amount is going up is actually a great thing. That means our TIDS have been successful, we're collecting increment, and that's paying us back for the different costs that we had to pay for the TID in the project plan. This chart here is from the 2022 adopted budget. This is looking at all of the funds that are paid for by property taxes. So general fund, FAT TV, library, debt, and capital projects. And this is looking at really how we're spending our money, what functions it's on. The biggest piece is of course, public safety at 42%. Second highest would be our debt service at 14. And then third would be general government at 11%. And this includes a lot of different departments in the city. So administration, finance, clerks, assessing, et cetera, are all included in that general government piece. But by far, the largest portion of our property tax budget goes to public safety. Looking at just the general fund, which is the main operating budget of the city. This looks at expenditures, just like the other chart, but in a different way. So what type of service or what type of expenditure it is on that the city spends its money on. And the bulk of our budget in the general fund is personnel. So 70% of the general fund budget is on wages and benefits for our staff. And really, that's not surprising because at the heart of what we are, a city is a service provider, and you need staff in order to provide those services. When we look at how our general fund is paid for, here in Wisconsin, we are mostly funded by property taxes. So about three quarters of our budget is paid for using property taxes. This is pretty normal for Wisconsin. We are a very property tax reliant state. Other states might have income tax or sales tax or other kind of user fees that help pay for local government. But here in Wisconsin, we are primarily funded by property taxes. And then we do get some money also from intergovernmental. So this is about 13% of our general fund budget for 2022. That includes things like general transportation aid, shared revenues, things like that that we get from the state, the federal government and the county. Why is the budget important? You know, I still say that this is one of the most important things that the council does. The budget not just sets our property tax levy, but it also is a priority statement. So things that are important to the council and thus important to the residents are things that we should fund in our budget. And it's the council's job to decide what is the higher priority items that you want to fund and those services that you want to fund, and maybe what are not as high priority and so are not funded. So we look at what that level of service is that the council wants the city to provide and what it costs to provide those services. We then subtract out all of the other revenues that we get, whether it's those intergovernmental aids we were talking about, some user fees that we have, other types of taxes, not property taxes. And whatever the difference is, that's the amount of property taxes that we have to collect from all of the property owners across the city. So another common misunderstanding is because the city collects the full amount of the property tax bill. A lot of people believe that that means all that money is coming to pay for city functions. But we are actually only 36% of the total bill based on last year. The school district is by far the largest, at 47%. The property tax bill also goes to pay for county government and then Madison College as well. This is just the chart that shows our total tax rule by jurisdictions. I did want to spend some time on how property tax bills are calculated, especially in relation to the assessment notices that I know went out last week. And I'm sure you're getting a lot of calls as well about the changes that are seen there. And wanted to provide some information to make sure we're all on the same page. So first, some terminology. So assessed value is the value that's placed on every property by the city assessor. They go property by property to look at statistics and market, and they assign a value to each individual property. The equalized value is more of a global amount or macro amount. The state sets that value, and they don't look property by property. They look at the total value within the city as one big lump number. And they change that number dependent depending on the sales and the new construction that happens in the city. But it's very much though a global number. And then the assessment ratio is the relationship between those two. So now, most years in recent history, the assessing department has done a market update every year, which means that the relationship between your assessed value and the equalized value is pretty close to 100%. They try to be right around market. But last year, if you remember, they did a maintenance year instead. So what that means is for most properties, the value that they had in 2020 is the same value that they had in 2021. So now, 2022, we're going back to doing that market update based on the current market and statistics. And so those increases that people are seeing really are two years' worth of increases, not just one, because it's going from the 2020 values to 2022 values. Now, how our budget calculates into a property tax bill? I know I talked about this last time, but I would like to spend just a couple of minutes on it because it is a question I get a lot from our property owners, is how our budget calculates and how those tax bills are calculated. So it is a three-step process in my somewhat simplified example here. Step one is setting those property tax levies. So in my example, I like to say it's baking the cake. So those property tax levies, through our budget process, remember, we're taking how much we want to spend to provide those services, subtract out all the other revenues we receive, and the difference is the property tax amount we need to collect. So that's the cake. You know, that's how much money we need to collect from everybody to fund our budget. We do that not just for us, the school districts each do that, the county does that, and Madison College all does that. And they provide me with all of those amounts so I can bake a whole cake for everybody's amounts and how much taxes we need to collect to fund everybody's budget. Then we do the frosting. So TIP districts, like TID 14 that we approved last night, those properties pay the exact same tax rate as every other property in the city. The difference is that the property taxes for those properties, instead of going to fund the budgets for the school and the city and the county, that money instead goes to the TID. And the TID uses that money to implement that project plan that's approved. So while they pay the same taxes, it's still money I need to collect from all of the property owners. So I like to think of that as the frosting, you know, additional money that we need to collect. Then the most important step is how that money is allocated to each individual property owner. So I know now how much I have to collect. Now we have to decide how much gets split out to every property. And the way that that's decided is how much assessed value each property is worth. So a great example for this one is, you know, yes, the residential homes went up quite a bit amount. But if that cake stays the size, same size, and the frosting stays the same size, I need to collect the same amount of money. If everybody's property goes up, say 10%, if everybody goes up the exact same amount, everybody's piece of this cake will be the same and their property tax bill will be the same. The way that it gets different is either a bigger cake, bigger budgets that need to be funded for all the overlying jurisdictions, or if there's changes in the proportional size of each one of those pieces that the property owners have. So I did run two kind of examples to try to demonstrate this theory that I'm sharing. And forgive me, it is a lot of numbers. Hopefully, they're at least bigger numbers so you can see them on the screen. But what this is, is last year's hypothetical amounts that I needed to collect for each one of the overlying jurisdictions. I'm here in this last year column. And you can see it added up to about $71 million that I needed to collect. And we had a total assessed value of 3.3 billion. So that left a tax rate of the 21.47. So now, in this example, we're saying everybody needs to collect the exact same amount of money. You know, the budgets are the exact same, the taxes that we need to collect in total are the exact same, but the assessed value went up. So that's the only change, and it went up 20%. So what that does then is it drops that tax rate from the $21 to the $18, and it's offset by the increase in your value. So if the cake is the same size and everybody's property goes up the same amount, tax rate drops, the value goes up, and your tax bill is the same. So I ran three, or I'm sorry, four example properties. So you'll notice all three of them had the same average home value last year. And then the difference between each one of the examples or each one of the colored bands is what happened to their value for the next year. So this first gray bar, this is our average home. So our average home for 2022, subject to changes because we're still in the open book process, but we think it's going to go from 330,000 to 379,000, which is almost 15% increase. And so on that previous slide, remember, the levies were the same for everybody. So the cake was the same size, but the value went up 20%. Since this average home is less than the 20%, their taxes will actually go down that $315,000 that you see in the lower right number in that gray bar. For another example, this is a property who went up less than the average home. So they started at the same 330 last year. This year, they're going up 10%. Their tax bill will drop even more because their increase, while significant at 10%, was less than what the overall was, so their share goes down. Third example is somebody who went up more than the average home. So they went up 17%, which is still less than the overall, so their taxes are still going down. And then this last example, it's somebody whose value went up a lot, 25%. Maybe they put on a deck or did some changes. Their value went up 25%. Since that's more than everybody else, they're going to have a bigger piece of that cake, and their tax bill is going to go up $295. So I have the same kind of scenario, for example, too. I won't walk it through in detail, but the only difference is that everybody's levy, so the school district, the county, the city, and Madison Colleges, the amount that we needed to collect to pay for the services that they wanted to provide went up 10% across the board. Kept the same 20% overall increase in value. And you can see the tax rate still dropped, but it didn't drop quite as much as it did in that other example. And then using those exact same four properties, so the same value last year, same value this year, you can see everybody's taxes went up. Because it's really more a driver of what the budget is for each one of those overlying jurisdictions than what it is, the percentage that your home went up, and then how much your home or your property went up compared to the average. So then this is just a chart to show if we did a 0% levy change, a 5% and 10% with those four examples, how it kind of compares. It did include some additional resources in here if you're interested, including this great video that JS Online did that talks about the importance of uniformity when the assessor places the values on all of their properties. It's a relatively short video, and I think it's a great, easy way to understand why that's important. Moving on to the next subject, budget constraints. So we did talk about this with expenditure restraint, I'm sorry, with the CIP process. So I won't spend a lot of time on it, but did want to let you know about some changes. So expenditure restraint is that optional program. We are not required to participate in it, but we want to because it's $600,000, $650,000 that we get from the state if we qualify. So we already talked about, you know, how that calculated. But wanted to mention that my current estimate is that our expenditure restraint increase will be about 9% that will be allowed to go up from last year, which is very, very large, mostly driven by CPI. So CPI or inflation, I'm sure we've all seen that costs are going up. A big factor in the expenditure restraint calculation is CPI. And is one of the ways that expenditure restraint calculation is very different than levy limit calculation because levy limit doesn't allow CPI, it's based on net new construction. So there's going to be a pretty big difference between expenditure restraint increase allowed and the levy limit increase allowed. So this is all more for expenditure restraint. The thing I do want to spend some time on, though, is the levy limits. So as you know from last year, levy limits is by far our biggest constraint in how we make sure our balance, our budget balances. This is a state statute requirement. There is no option to qualify. It is required. And then besides that, there's also a very stiff penalty, dollar-for-dollar penalty from the state out of our state aid if we don't comply with levy limits. So besides the fact that it's against state statute, there's also a very fierce financial penalty if we don't. So definitely something that we will need to stay focused on again for this budget. I included the levy limit calculation form in case you're interested. One thing I wanted to point out, this adjustment M, this is where that Town of Madison adjustment would come in. And I'll talk about those numbers in a bit. So levy limits are primarily based on net new construction. This red line is that 3% kind of average that we've been seeing. You can see in recent years, we've been growing quite a bit, which is how we've been able to fund some of our additional staff positions and other additional services in our recent budgets. But it's not something that we should necessarily rely on. As you can see, it wasn't too long ago where we weren't hitting that 3%. So we've gone through this kind of seesaw in the past. So in my overall view of the world, so you need a 2% to 3% increase in net new construction or increase in your levy limit to pay for just the ongoing cost of doing business as is status quo. Because inflation, not this year, but in general, is somewhere in that 2% to 3% ballpark. So you know, we really need to grow quite a bit in order just to keep up with status quo on the services that we provide. This year, I don't have a new estimate yet. Net new construction comes out next week preliminarily, so we'll know that number soon. But we're still thinking we'll have about a 4% net new construction going into this budget. So that gives us a little bit of cushion to address additional items in our budget, which would include things like the Town of Madison, the additional services we need to provide, additional staff capacity to provide those services, and then other growth in our capacity. I did think it was important to remind everybody how much was added in the 2022 budget because of the Town of Madison. The council made great commitment to staff in particular to add these additional positions in order to help absorb the Town of Madison. So all of these positions were added with the 2022 budget. The thought always was, though, that this was kind of the first batch of positions and that more positions would likely be needed in 2023 to address the rest of that. We do have some other pressing budget issues that we'll need to make sure we account for as we go through the budget process. Wages and benefits. And remember, that's 70% of our general fund budget, so it's a significant portion of our budget. There are union negotiated increases. We did a market poll for our non-represented permanent staff that we're hoping to be able to implement. We would like to increase our LTE, our seasonal, and our POX pay schedules. The labor market is exceptionally tight, and we need to increase our wages in order to be competitive and get the staff that we want to provide the services to our community. Health insurance is a huge wild card. I won't know that amount for another month and a half, but it's likely going up because everything is going up. WRS contribution, so this is the retirement plan that the city participates in with, for the employees. The contributions will go up as wages go up, but the rate also is increasing. So a higher percentage of wages needs to be contributed to WRS, both on the city side and on the employee side this coming year. And then we'll have additional staffing requests. We also had that road salt structural deficit from last year of $90,000 that we need to make sure is accounted for in this next budget. Inflation, as I've mentioned, is very, very high, and local government is not immune from inflation, especially gas prices. You know, you think of our police department in particular that are spending a lot of time out on the road, out in the community. Takes a lot of gas in order to do those routes. And the gas prices being as high as they are is a pretty significant increase that we'll need to absorb. There are also some operating impacts that were included in that adopted CIP that we approved last night. And then the Neighborhood Hub Phase 1, council approved that contract, which had those operating costs associated with it that we'll need to absorb. And then a couple other things for future years I wanted to point out. Biggest one to make sure it doesn't fall off the radar is that metro transit route change that council approved primarily up in the Southdale area. That has $125,000 cost to it, but it won't hit until 2024. So while we don't need to absorb it in 2023, it is very wise for us to set that levy limit capacity aside now so that we don't have a problem in 2024 when that bill comes due. And then as additional facilities are added, obviously, there'll be an operating cost associated with those as well for the maintenance, the future replacement, and the operating costs. Levy limits, we do get a couple of adjustments. So external debt is allowed as an adjustment. This chart just shows what our debt level has been. And then the Town of Madison absorption. So this is the one where we are going to get the biggest lift in our levy limit adjustment this coming year. But you'll recall, we spent the bulk of it with the 2022 budget in order to pay for all of those positions I pointed out before. So this is the chart you guys saw during the CIP time. That showed the TID 6 closure and the Town of Madison absorption, those levy limits that we pre-spent in 2022, what I originally thought we were going to get for those adjustments back when we put together the 2022 budget and then our revised estimate. So you recall, the TID 6 closure went down from what I had estimated. That amount is based on 1121 values, but then also the tax levy that was set during the 2022 budget. And I just wasn't conservative enough as I was calculating that. And then the Town of Madison absorption. This is where I shared the really bad news last time, that now I have really great news. So the Town of Madison absorption levy limit adjustment is based on the taxes those properties paid to the town the year before. But that's where the town artificially reduced how much property taxes they were going to collect from their residents by using fund balance in that last year of operation. And so what I originally thought was going to be $770,000 based on last year's taxes, if the DOR would have stuck to what the adjustment was that they were sharing, would have dropped down to $470,000. After successful conversations with the Department of Revenue, they agreed to let us use the town taxes paid two years ago instead. So while that's not perfect, it doesn't cover all of our costs by any means, and it negates any TID growth they had or any net new construction they had, it's still significantly better than the town taxes they paid last year. So you can see, we went from a $300,000 hole we had going into the CIP into a little bit of a cushion going into this budget. So that was a huge benefit to us. I mean, we really appreciate the Department of Revenue working with us on this very unique situation. The other levy limit adjustment we get is when a TID closes. So we talked about TID 6 closing. We got that, or will get that levy limit adjustment for 2023, though we spent it in 2022. TID 4 is the next one that we will probably close. If all goes as I expect and as planned, we will close TID 4 before April 15 of 2023, including that affordable housing extension. But we will officially close the TID before that magic date, which means that levy limit adjustment would be available for the 2024 budget. But we may want to consider using the same strategy that we did with TID 6, or we spend it a year early. Levy limits also have a carryover provision allowed. Because of how I fill out the form strategically, we actually don't need to follow the official adjustment process on the form. But this is the amount of capacity that we had available. You can see, I had quite a bit six, seven years ago. It's been dwindling quite a bit. And at the end of 2022, council left $53,000 in levy limit capacity, which is great because that will help set us up for 2023, including those couple of structural deficits. And there's some other references here. Wanted to take a moment to talk about the ARPA and TID closure funding. So just to recap where we are now. So the investment plan for this one-time money was adopted by council in March. And it prioritizes, prioritized just the things we wanted to look at further. You know, what possible projects we wanted to fund with that one-time money. It didn't commit us to it. It didn't allow staff to move forward with the actual purchasing. It just said, this is the first blush of things that we want to explore more and look into further. We then adopted a couple of budget amendments in 2022. Those budget amendments did appropriate funds. So those budget amendments did say, okay, staff, go execute these projects. And staff has been working on those. The CIP that was adopted last night also included quite a few projects that were funded by the ARPA and TID closure funds for a couple of different years. And then there's also some projects still remaining in the investment plan that are operating budget items that we think would show up in the 23 or 24 budget for the first time. So those are kind of the different categories of timing of the different projects in that investment plan. Now, when we adopted the investment plan, you recall, we had about $5.2 million worth of that one. Now, when we adopted the investment plan, you recall we had about five point two million dollars worth of that one-time money. And the investment plan allocated over seven million dollars worth of projects. As we went through this um, exercise of further evaluating which projects we wanted to include. Uh, we still are spending much more than what that funding exists. Um, so these two charts are actually the same information, just cut a little bit differently depending on how you want to look at it. Um, so this top one is the TID money on the top line, the ARPA money on the second line. And it shows how the money was kind of identified. So the first two columns are the twenty twenty two money that we've already said, go ahead, staff, start implementing these. Uh, twenty twenty three budget identified another four point five million dollars worth of funding. And then we have those couple of projects in the future operating budgets. So you can see we have overcommitted about one point eight million still. Uh, this chart here in the bottom right corner is that same information just shown by year that we thought that it would spend. So the top chart is kind of the process by which it was identified. This lower chart is strictly by year. Um, and both charts obviously show the same one point eight million that we are talking about committing to, but haven't yet. And I'll also point out, so the pieces that have not been actually through council yet are just these two items for the twenty twenty three operating budget and the twenty twenty four operating budget. That's about five hundred thousand. So council has already pretty strongly identified well over the amount of money that we have available. And so prioritization is still needed. Uh, we'll have to go through that exercise. The other big caveat in all of this is that these numbers only include the projects that I have numbers for. Um, so I did take administrative costs out of the calculation because we had so many other things that wanted to spend the funding on. So that's not included in here. Stormwater projects and other federal matches, it was identified as a category in the investment fund. Uh, I'm sorry, the investment plan, uh, but there weren't specific projects identified. And so those projects, since they aren't identified, also aren't included in these numbers. So if there are stormwater projects that are coming up that we want to pay for out of this money, that's not included in here and shows even more money that we'll need or more projects that we'll need to prioritize to get within our available funding. Structural deficits. I know you all know about these. Um, ex, we've included some examples of them. Really, the concept of it is setting yourself up for problems in the future. You know, whether that's delaying things, um, this whole fund balance use, that type of a thing. Uh, and they're just a bad idea because you're kicking that can down the road. And in an era of really tight levy limits and very tight restrictions on municipal budgets, kicking that can down will only go so far because it comes a really big problem. There are two structural deficits I think we need to address in the very near future. Um, the first one, the fund balance use, we talked about this a little bit last night during the CIP process. Um, so there is a use of fund balance to support the decreasing expenditure restraint aid. It is not for a specific project. It is not one time. It is just a hole that we are digging for ourselves. And that's something that I think we need to address. And then the second one I talked about a little earlier, so that transit route uh, that was added by the council, hundred and twenty five thousand in twenty twenty four. So it really would be wise to step that aside. Make sure we know how we're going to address it next year when next year comes. Talking some logistics and mechanics. Uh, so we're always trying to find ways to do the operating budget a little bit better. Uh, so we do have a couple of new account numbers that I wanted to mention. So you're not surprised when you see them. Uh, first is the gasoline and the diesel fuel. So we set that up in its own separate account number. Since it is so volatile, um, so that we can run reports and either include it or exclude it depending on, you know, what we're looking at. So it doesn't mess up our trends in our other categories. Also added new account numbers for the lease and rental costs. This is to help facilitate some new reporting requirements that I'm going to have. It'll make it much easier to comply if those are set up separately. Uh, the new staffing proposal form, uh, it's a little bit enhanced from last year's. Overall, it looks very similar. But we did add a section on metrics or statistics so that the the form would show how the city or how the department has grown and caused the need for this new staff. And then we also added a section about alternatives. So either what departments have done in lieu of hiring staff up until now to absorb that growth? Or what could be done uh, if this position isn't added to kind of counteract the need? Um, so there's a section added for that too. The mass transit fund. I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to handle this one. It depends on how expenditure restraint calculation works itself out. Uh, but if you recall, the council approved us going for state grant money directly ourselves. Um, so now we'll have a bigger expense, but we'll have that state money coming in to offset it for about the same amount of property taxes going towards it. Uh, but because that big amount counts towards expenditure restraint, I might move all of that money into a special revenue fund. So that's kind of to be determined depending on a couple of factors, but wanted to mention it in case it does happen. I did ask staff to specifically identify any town of Madison costs. Uh, that's the amounts that I will use then to request an adjustment for expenditure restraint from the Department of Revenue. So you might see those a little better delineated this year to try to get as large of an adjustment as we can. And then we added some additional executive summaries. So in the budget, the beginning of each department has an executive summary. That taught me as the couple of page high level documents about accomplishments and goals and significant changes and staffing levels. Uh, there's a couple of departments that would have one big one for multiple divisions and I've just split those up into separate documents uh, to make them a little bit more of a bite-sized piece for council and the public to use. The budget process itself is very similar to what we've done last year and several years up until now. Um, so I won't go through all of those. And then next steps. Uh, so tonight is the kickoff where we talk about the context and the terminology. The mayor's proposed twenty twenty three budget will be released on September twenty third. You will have budget workshops with the department heads on October fourth and fifth. Hopefully you have those on your calendar. Uh, that's a chance for you to hear from the department heads what their requests are. Again, ask as many questions as you have so that you can make a good decision on what the priorities and the funding levels are for the city. We'll have a public hearing at the first council meeting in October. This is where the public can weigh in on the mayor's proposed budget. Council then will use all of that information to submit their amendments for what you think could be done differently in the budget and what your proposals are. Those are due October fourteenth. I have just about a week to turn those around. Uh, the committee of the whole meeting in October will be spent discussing those amendments. And then the uh, November first is when we'll have a public hearing at the council meeting. We'll vote on all of the amendments and we'll adopt the budget. And I'll just note that that is a week earlier than normal because of the election that is on the second Tuesday of November. So I'll remind you, there are very strict rules when we get to the budget process. So the amendments are all submitted. Uh, the only thing that can change in the budget from the mayor's proposal to the final adopted budget are things that council puts amendments in for. So we can amend amendment, we can change it slightly, but only things that have been submitted as an amendment can be uh, changed or adopted as changes. And then there's also very strict timelines included in the ordinances. So that uh, restricts how many times you're allowed to speak at the council meeting and for how long. And so that's why we split it. You know, we have that committee of the whole meeting where we have all the discussion on the amendments. You know, what questions you have, why you think something may or may not be a good idea. And then when we get to the council meeting, we just vote. You know, each person can speak twice. You amend it. You vote on it and we're done. Um, biggest reason for that is, you know, if we have, let's call it fifty amendments at ten minutes each. That's five hundred minutes, which is a long meeting. So we're trying to uh, separate those out to give plenty of time for discussion so you can make good decisions. Um, but also keep the council meeting and the voting very efficient. This year, just like the last couple of years, we'll do the, I'll call them extra steps. Uh, so the ordinances lay out the main parameters. Um, but we do pass a resolution with these extra steps. Um, so we'll pass this resolution first, this procedure, then we'll go into the amendments. I do have a couple of notes from last year on things to change, mostly just clarifying what does and does not count for speaking and time limits and such. Uh, but for the most part, we'll use the same process. And I believe that went well, uh, unless you tell me otherwise. So with that, I can open it up for questions. Um, but it's also a great time for council to share with the mayor what your priorities are coming into this next budget.
Randy, if I may just say one quick thing, if you get the monthly newsletter that legal Wisconsin municipalities puts out. They, one that they just sent out was about budgeting and you know, some of the challenges that municipalities throughout the state face. I think it's probably the best magazine I've seen in the however many years I've been giving them. A lot of great information in there. It also hits home how fortunate we are that we have the growth that we do when you look at other communities, I believe it's West Alice had to cut like ten positions last year and looking at possibly having to cut another ten this year because they only grew one and a half percent. So besides that, just a lot of great information in there. I highly recommend reading through that.
Very good. Uh, additional questions? Yes, go ahead.
Misty, do you have this um, presentation tonight available online somewhere to download?
It is not yet, but I will email it to you guys tomorrow.
Groovy.
Yes, Alder Ratafroda, go ahead.
Uh, Misty, I have a question. Um, you mentioned that then for the twenty twenty four budget. Uh, the NADISOMETRO adjustment, you know, for the route is considered um, a structural deficit. Why?
So council made a decision in twenty twenty two that will increase costs in twenty twenty four. So because you made a decision now, but you haven't funded it yet, uh, that would be a structural deficit. If we plan for it, we set aside money in the levy limits or we, we somehow make sure it's accounted for. Uh, then it's an addressed structural deficit. Um, but as of right now, it's something that we need to keep on the radar.
But can I ask a follow-up question? How we can plan for that during twenty twenty three?
So my suggestion would be whatever the levy limit is, we leave a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of capacity there. So that next year, when that comes, we don't have to absorb it. We have that already set aside because so made that decision.
Okay, one, one more, go ahead.
Yeah, this one is for the mayor. Um, Aaron, do you have any idea how many position are you planning to approve in the budget, new position?
I don't know yet what it's going to be. Obviously, there's a lot of needs throughout the city. Um, but I don't know yet at that point, at this point, what that will be. Uh, we're doing presentations in a few weeks here and I'll get a better feel for it at that point in time, but uh, staff has not submitted everything to Misty quite yet. I think that's soon. But I don't miss test to go through it and see where we're at. I, I think it's safe to say that it's going to be tough to add many positions, I think, based on what we hear. I can't see adding more than one position in a department. I, I think that's one thing that I've tried to do is be very fair to all departments in the city and try to increase capacity in most departments so far without having anyone be able to say, oh, you really favor this department or that department. You always give them, you know, tons of positions and everything they want. I've tried to be very fair to all departments and we'll continue doing that. Um, so you know, there's a few departments that we have not increased capacity in. I think at least some of those I would like to do that because of all the additional demands with town of Madison and our growth. So I think there's, there's, there's a lot of needs, uh, and I won't be able to come anywhere close to adding as many positions as we need as a city.
Alder Allen, you had a question?
Yeah, I want to go back to that metro thing. So um, I know in the past, in the distant past, we have budgeted money to put into fund balance. This would have been going back to the time that uh, Doug Morissette got elected and the city had basically no fund to balance because the previous three mayors had spent it all. Um, so we, for several years, I think it was four or five years, we were budgeting a certain amount just simply to put in fund balance. So for this hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, would you recommend that that's what we would do? Or would we just have some one-time expenditures to spend the money on? Knowing that those aren't going to come up in twenty twenty four? Um, and just, you know, so that we would have that money available. How, how would you suggest we go about dealing with that?
So that is one option is to come up with a very specific hundred and twenty five thousand dollar one-time expense in twenty twenty three that you know is going to fall off and then it will get back filled with the metro. So that is a, a fair option. I'd hate to levy the hundred and twenty five thousand and collect that from people and then just set it into fund balance. Because we'll need to do it ongoing. Uh, we would be increasing taxes for not a need at this point. So my preference would be that we just set aside that capacity so we know we can increase taxes the year after um, without violating levy limits. Um, but your other idea I thought was, is a great option too, if there's things that meet that criteria.
Uh, Alder Ratafroda, you had another question?
Yeah, so uh, this is again for Aaron, um, following your, your answer is. So you mentioned that maybe you're gonna fund one position for each department? Or, you know, I want to have an idea. Because I want to know how many position the budget can absorb. You know, I mean, like we are talking about five position, ten position, fifteen?
We have no idea how many positions. I'm not going to fund one per department. I, I, it's going to be hard for me to give any department more than one, but I would guess three to five. But that's a wild guess without having all the information. We don't know yet how many positions we'll be able to add.
Okay. And I can jump in quick. So we haven't even gotten all of the requests from staff yet, so I don't have even preliminary numbers to tell you. Um, all I know is kind of that context that I shared in the presentation. So those things we know, those big ticket dollars that we know are coming down and need to be addressed, but that, the amount of capacity I don't have a good handle on right now. We will soon.
Yes, uh, Alder Ratafroda, go ahead.
So, okay, I don't know if anyone wants more question there, but uh, before I forget my question, so this one. Uh, Misty, this is for you. I know that uh, it's going to be very hard for COLA adjustment this year because you know, it's not going to be a new year or two or three percent COLA adjustment. You know, I mean, inflation rate is almost nine percent. So how we are gonna ha, you know, because how we are gonna uh, manage this, this um, extra increase? And how we can absorb those wages without you know, drop our dance in our budget because you know, like a three percent, we can say we're gonna just, you know, wage at three percent, but now is um, you know, the inflation is not percent. So an employee can say, hey, my wages are, you know, you're giving three percent, but inflation is nine. So six percent is what happened with that gap? Have you considered what is going to be the approach or?
So I don't have an answer on the approach, but I'll say that this is exactly one of the talking points for the levy limit calculation. So tying our levy limit calculation to net new construction is really tough for local governments, especially in years of very high inflation. Uh, and so like the expenditure restraint calculation, remember how that has an amount of a CPI calculation factored into it? Uh, that would be a great way to improve our levy limit process or a formula of what would it take state legislature approval? So that's one of the big talking points that it should somehow be tied to CIP, but at this point it is not.
Okay.
Okay, additional questions? We do have some time where our second uh, presentation will, they're, they're setting up currently. So if there are questions, this is the time. Uh, yes, Alder Ratafroda, go ahead.
So one of the last uh, slide mentioned, what are the priorities that we can, for the mayor or what are the things that are, we want to ask the mayor to reconsider and I will like, add on to, you know, for the position for Allah, uh, for the tree, our tree forester to increase it to, you know, I think she's zero point eight right now, Misty?
Yep. So she was point six and council approved going up to point eight in the twenty twenty two budget.
Point eight, yeah. Uh, uh, you know, if we can see, we can move it to, you know, full time, you know, um, you know, um, that will be uh, this is something that we discussed, um, some of the, in park commission, we was kind of discussed, you know, but um, how we can um, you know, make that position, you know, on a position full time.
Thank you for that. That's helpful to hear things that people are interested in.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I just think it's helpful to understand some of the things that people are, you know, interested in, including in the budget. So that's helpful.
Yeah, it is very helpful. Thank you. Additional questions, discussion? Hearing none, I want to thank Misty Dodge for the presentation. It's been very helpful as always. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
All right, very good. We will move on to our next presentation and that is the teen center, teen center presentation with Annette Miller, the EQT by Design. And welcome. Yes, I'm just going to turn the floor over to you and
Okay.
and it's yours.
If someone wants to hum or sing while I come into the Zoom, I'm going through the registration.
That's all right.
Part real quick, but.
And council president, I can give a brief introduction while she's setting up.
Very good. Go ahead.
Oh darn, I was just going to start singing.
Joe knew that, that's why he.
Yeah, absolutely. I was right on time. I read your mind. Council, council president, mayor, thank you for having us and thank you for making space for this presentation. As you all know, this process began about two years ago and things take time in city processes and this is one step of several over the next five years to be able to create an institution in this city. And we have had the pleasure of selecting an excellent professional organization that has a niche that no other organization in this region fills, which is really looking at underrepresented voices and ensuring that, you know, folks that are involved in the consequences of a decision are a part of the decision-making processes. So I just want to thank all of the partners and all of the folks that have contributed to being able to make this happen, which we'll get to in the presentation. But this was a real shining example of how, you know, you don't just have to be a voter or a property owner or, you know, in any sort of traditional position to be able to have a voice in the things that happen in the city. You know, we really honed in on and ensured that youth voice was centered in this process. And that's something that'll continue to happen as we move forward. So I'll stop talking at this point, just to know that, oh, you want me to keep going? Pontificating. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we did prior to this process starting is we were able to take a process through our committees in which we selected an agency that's best qualified to be able to do this work. The Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, as well as several staff members, were confident in Equity by Design's competence in being able to do this work. And one of the other things that was a plus was that we also had the support of several organizations and individuals in making this work happen. Some of those organizations are here with us and they're going to be talking about their role in the process as well. And probably most important was that we got significant amount of financial support to be able to include and pay teens to be able to be a central part of leading this study. So as you see, we have an audience here. And that audience was critical in making this work happen. There were several organizations that many of our interns were a part of, whether it be their schools, whether it be local community organizations that referred them. And we set out a goal to select five interns, but we ended up going with eight and found the funds to be able to pay all of them. So you know, again, just wanted to thank you all for listening. And this should be a very exciting presentation once we get the technology right.
Very good. Thank you, Alder Maldonado. We're still, we're having some technical difficulties. We will, we will be with you. Yes, sure, about five minutes, 10 minutes?
I can fill it with singing.
Do I hear a motion for recess? All right, very good.
I'll also say that so this, this particular project was budgeted in 2021 and we started at the end of that calendar year and it went through 2022. And if the council will recall, there is funding in our 2022 budget to be able to go into phase two of this project, which will be an architectural design. And I'm currently working with city staff to be able to finalize RFP to select an architect. And that process would likely start towards the end of this calendar year and go into the beginning and middle of 2023. And it's our hope that in the same way that youth were involved in this process and some of the community organizations were involved in this process, that they'll be involved in the next phase of this as well.
Very good. Thank you again.
Randy, unfortunately Misty's not online, but I'm pretty sure the next phase is feasibility study. I think that was in the budget actually is the feasibility, not design. I think you do the feasibility before the design. We can check with Misty. She's not on anymore, but I believe it's feasibility is the.
Feasibility than than the design. So we know, we know what we're designing, right? Yeah. Scott, would you, would you like to go into a recess still? I mean, can you? We do have a motion on the floor to recess. We will be back in five minutes. Very good. Thank you. We are, we are back and once again, I will turn the floor over to Annette Miller. We've resolved our tech.
We have resolved our technical issues. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to this meeting. Again, my name is Annette Miller. I am the CEO and founder of Equity by Design. Thank you, Alder Maldonado, for the great introduction of who Equity by Design is. And I appreciate the compliment so much. And actually, I'm really excited for Pittsburgh and for this council, we have some really strong data that we're really excited to share. Today, what our intention is, is to give you an executive summary of the process that Equity by Design went through in partnership and collaboration with others, which I'll get into shortly, along with the interns. Before I do that, I I do feel like it's really important just to make sure that all of you are aware of how we do our work. It's really important to us when we do engagement. Our goal is really to bridge voices in the community and in particularly voices that aren't often listened to, stakeholders and constituencies that may be hard to reach because of design or because of content. Sometimes they just don't connect to the topic. So we really pride ourselves on really trying to obtain that reach through the way that we think about our relationships and our design. And so for us, it's the intersectionality of people, policy and process. That's important for us. And so we really feel like that is the heart of our work. And we really think that relationships are really important and so is voice, especially to for governmental entities, really being able to listen and understand what is it that the community and the constituencies are trying to say when important decisions are trying to be made? I, having been in government myself, we want to hear, we want to know what's happening. So this work that I do as Equity by Design has really been a privilege and an honor because we feel like we are really making traction and bringing that voice. And we're really excited tonight because one of the things that I'd like to tell you is that as part of the engagement, we reached over 450 teens and adults across, within and outside of Pittsburgh. And so that is a really great win in terms of really trying to hear and understand what it is you need to know about this opportunity to build a teen center. So with that, I'm going to get into the fun of this. So tonight, what I want to cover is talk about the team goals or the project team, the goals of the engagement and the objectives of it, talk about the design and the process, as well as what were the results, what did we learn? And then how can we apply what we learned from this engagement? So first and foremost, you know, what was the goal? The goal was to make sure that the engagement process informed the development of a teen services and resources facility for the Verona Road West priority neighborhood, which is established in your own plan. Also, the vision as per the RFP is that this teen center should really be a neighborhood and community gathering place consisting of indoor space to house learning, recreation, culture, and be able to socialize and create relationships and create an environment that's welcoming. The majority of the space should be devoted to teen and parents and guardians. So looking at that demographic of 13, ages 13 to 20, and that the facility should be adjacent or nearby a public park space or outdoor recreational amenity. The engagement, as part of the RFP, it was also asked that the engagement should really center the voice of the neighborhood and other city residents with an emphasis on teen demographic and also making sure that we reached underrepresented populations, particularly Black and Latinx and other minority and intersectional identities, including women-led organizations. So the project timeline was that back in September, we were hired and we went through a planning and design process with the planning team. We hired student interns in November. We hosted an open house in December of 2021. And then we collected data from that open house. And then we also developed a survey that we prepared, not only for teens, but also for the community, i.e. adults. We launched the general survey or the community survey in February. We did youth focus groups in March and in April, we continued to do youth focus groups. And we also then identified what are the values and the themes? Excuse me, from all of the data that we collected over the process and duration of the engagement. So the open house, the surveys, both adult and teen and the focus groups. We then held a public workshop in May to present out to the community what we learned. And then what we've been doing since that public workshop is we've been putting, you know, looking at the data, analyzing it. And today, what we have for you is a report of executive summary of what we learned. And then in next month in August, we'll have a final report, a hard copy for you with all the data up to your eyeballs on all the different kinds of comments and feedback that came. But that, but that was the project engagement timeline that we operated under with this RFP. In terms of who is the project or the planning team, of course, we had Alder Joe Maldonado. He was wearing two her hats. He was an alder, but he also represents and brings strength from UW Extension. Wade Thompson also, prior to his leaving, was integral in this work and has since brought in other colleagues to fill that that role in terms of planning. Jeremy Crosby and his team from Fact TV were really instrumental in making sure that when we had, you know, events and we had survey links and things like that to present, they made sure that they promoted it through the city of Pittsburgh's different networks. We have Taylor Seal from UW Extension. She gave of her time, both as a staff person and just also in terms of passion, in terms of wanting to work with the youth, very knowledgeable. We have Eli Sarofsky from the Healthy Kids Collaborative. And we also had Julia Stanley and Sean Koval, who are also part of the Healthy Kids Collaborative behind the scenes, being cheerleaders for this work. And then, of course, Equity by Design, my team tonight, I've brought with me Matias Lemos Castillo, but we also had Myra Madrano and Matthew Bronken helping us behind the scenes. So we were all working together to make this project possible. We have our interns, five of them or four of them are here tonight, representing Pittsburgh, Oregon, Madison and Verona. And you'll hear more from them later. We we originally had eight interns. Unfortunately, one intern had to step away. So towards the end, and so we are here, we had seven. And tonight, again, we have four with us. They were invaluable to the process in terms of really helping us obtain the data that we needed to hear and learn and understand in terms of what do we need to know about developing and building a teen center in Pittsburgh? I think it's also really important to know that Pittsburgh has a lot of key supporters. There's the Friends of the Pittsburgh Teen Center, Kate Prehn is part of that. The Center for Community Stewardship, which is holding the funds for the Friends of the Pittsburgh Teen Center. We had donors, the, here's a fun little story behind the scenes. So when we were starting the engagement process, Joe Rideray said, we have to have teen voicing. I said, absolutely. We said, we need to identify teens. We thought we were going to get three, four, maybe five teens and we had eight. And Joe and I looked at each other and Taylor and we're like, I think we're hiring 18s because they're all really good. So we only had so much funding. So we went out and we did some fundraising to be able to pay for the internship stipends for the interns. And so Verona Area High School Football Team donated, American Family donated, Madison Gas and Electric donated. We had a Pittsburgh resident do a run and donated their funds towards this, Ryan Huesman. And then Equity by Design and then, of course, the Healthy Kids Collaborative also donated as well to help pay for the stipends for the interns. Another key supporter was the Redeemer City Church. Pastor Nate Hobert and Emily Meschit were phenomenal in terms of offering up their space. They donated it to us for free. And so we were able to have not only our meetings with the interns, but any community engagement that we had. We were able to use the site there as well. So for example, we had a bike event and the bikes came into the, into the space. And so it was really fun and the interns were there to talk about what they were doing. So Pittsburgh is really blessed in that they, you have important private, public and nonprofit entities in the area who are really supportive of what's happening here in Pittsburgh. So I felt it was important to mention that. In terms of the project design, as you saw in the timeline, technology was a key foundation. Anything that we developed, we made sure that we could have it available electronically for people. So if, especially with COVID, but also for access, you know, because of people's schedules and what's going on in their life, the timing of events may not always intersect nicely with what we were doing. So we always had technology as a backup for people to engage. We had focus groups. We used the surveys to be able to really push and promote. We even did one-on-one interactions as needed to be able to talk to constituents. We did some in-person walk tours and bike events. And then, of course, we had the open house and the workshop. And all of this was done to find different important ways to make sure that we could get a real broad, inclusive and diverse response. And I have to say that Fact TV was there every step of the way for all the things that we came up. They were there to make sure that they helped promote it. So we really appreciate that. In terms of the engagement itself, it's really important for you to understand that the student interns really informed and led this work. They were the ones who made us successful in terms of the number of surveys that we received from the teens as well as from the community. They were a great partner and a great collaborator with the Healthy Kids Collaborative and with Taylor. They did a photo voice project together. There was the teen survey. They informed the questions that were developed in the teen survey. We talked to the teens about what do you think about these questions? How should they shift and change? Do they make sense? Are we going to get the kind of answer that we expect? With the adult survey, same thing, asked for their insight there. With the targeted focus groups, they actually designed the process. They were the ones who led the focus groups themselves. And we were just there as the adults as the backdrop, just to make sure that they had the support that they need. And the same thing with the public sessions, the interns were the ones to greet everybody, let them know what was happening in the space. And they also stepped up and spoke at each of the events to talk about what was happening. So this was very much a youth-led, youth-centered and informed process and design, which we're really proud of. With that, when we started the engagement, the first thing we did is we talked to the interns themselves to ask them. interns themselves to ask them, "Well, what do you value and what do you want us to focus on?" And so for them, when they thought about this teen center, they said that it's really important that we value mental health. And there were very important stories that were shared, not only with the interns, but even with the teens and in the community surveys, people sharing how important mental health is. Creating a safe space came up constantly, really having the ability to be themselves and being able to express themselves the way that they want to, rather than having to be under an organized system that's constantly monitoring and telling them how they have to be. Example is sports and school. You know, at home, they have to follow other people's rules, but at a teen center, they get to follow their own rules that they've developed. And so, and they can feel safe in thinking about bringing their full selves into this space. Diversity was also really important. Unfortunately, we've kind of watered down that word, diversity. I think it's important for people to understand that when we're talking about diversity, we're talking about race, we're talking about ethnicity, we're talking about culture, language, ability. We're talking about the intersectionality of that. We're talking about, you know, class. We're talking about the way in which people express themselves through the different modes and mediums. So when we talk about diversity, it really is more about how do you feel like you belong? And how do you feel welcomed? And how does the space, how is it designed and set up from a structural perspective to be able to make that happen? So staffing is important and programming is important when we use the word diversity. It's not just representation, like, "Oh, you have somebody who looks or talks a certain way." It's much more deeper than that. It's richer than that. Community connection, really thinking about how can we reach, how can we be connected with the community, and how can the community be connected with the teen center came up. Educational resource support, student growth, space for fun, and compromise, I thought, was a really interesting value set that came forward from the interns. I'm really getting into this, and I probably need to keep going faster. So you'll start seeing me go a little bit faster. I had mentioned the photo voicing project. In that project, the teens went out and took photos and in their neighborhoods or in spaces that they favor, and what came back is that neighborhood, diversity, jobs and education, safety, and environment. And when we talk about environment, again, it's about how does the space make them feel, right? It's that energy that's in there or not in that space. How does it look? How can they feel comfortable in the space and the design? So they used photos as a way to really express that. And this is what came from the interns, and that was like the foundation of, from which we leapt from to do the rest of the work that came from the engagement. At the open house, which happened in December, we had fifteen people contribute to, this is called a padlet, it's anonymous, so people were able, I know you can read this, right? Like, I can read it too, not really. But fifteen people attended and contributed. There were thirty-one posted comments and forty reactions. Just a couple comments that came up is that they talked about at the open house, youth being involved in the design process, investment in the youth in our area, fun games and events where friends can go. Also talked about who, how, or what happens in or at the center to make it feel welcoming and inclusive, confidential, trauma-informed counseling, a space for mental health, help give teens a voice, which is some of the comments that came from that open house at the start of this process. So now we'll get into the data. This is the part that I think is really important for you all, because as people who have to represent the whole of Fitchburg, data can matter. So some things you might want to know about what we learned from the survey. There's both the teen survey and the community survey. A total of three hundred and ninety surveys were received. Eighty-six percent of the teens go to Verona Area High School. So even though the percent of teens may not live within Fitchburg, which was thirty-five percent, they all go to the school that's in and housed and, you know, and is a feeder. So that is a really strong center and something for you all to know. With the community survey, sixty-four percent of those who responded, and again, that was a hundred and seventy-six responses, lived within Fitchburg. So you can have a high confidence about where the data resides and comes from. I could tell you other stuff. You'll all have this data in a report, but I'm going to keep on going because, again, I like to talk, and I need to keep on going. Another thing that you would want to know in terms of the community survey is that of those who answered the community survey, I mentioned that sixty-four percent live in Fitchburg. Another thing to know is that sixty-five percent of those who answered it are kids with, have kids under age eighteen, or fifty-four percent actively engaged with youth and teens. So the question is, that we asked everyone, is do you support the development of a youth teen center? And overwhelmingly, at eighty-five percent, they fully support or could live with the teen center. So I think that's really important for you all to know. Only fourteen people said no. So, again, fourteen people out of, you know, almost a hundred and fifty, and that's just the community survey. Do you live in Fitchburg? I shared with you that seventy-six percent of those who, seventy-six percent live in Fitchburg and also support the teen center. And so there's just really strong data, whether you talk about if they live in Fitchburg or around or near Fitchburg, there is really strong support. Also, biracial, ethnic identity, also really strong support. Eighty-five percent of our white community supports it. Ninety percent of those who consider themselves non-white, so Black, Indigenous, people of color, and those who prefer to self-identify, also high level of support. And then when we look at age, fourteen to seventeen, not a surprise, they support. Eighteen to twenty-four, when you do start getting into some of the ages where some say it's not needed, it was at a really small margin. So ninety-six percent, eighty-five percent, eighty-two percent for those who are aged forty-five to fifty-four, fifty-five to sixty-four, seventy-nine percent support the teen center. And even for those who are older, over sixty-five, still sixty-two and a half percent of those over the age of sixty-five did support the teen center. So I think that's just really important to understand. Even though the older, the age, the less support, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was such a high level that it's not material in terms of lack of support. We asked another question, which was the likelihood of someone you know using the teen center. At seventy percent, people knew someone who would use the teen center. So these were all the respondents, both the community survey and the teen center, they knew somebody who would use the teen center. Very busy chart, but basically what it does is it talks about what kind of space would you like to see at the teen center? I'm going to pass that. Another important thing to know about the data from the teen, both the community survey and the teen, was that what was the biggest concern? Operational support, which is not a big surprise, and capital support. What's interesting about the response is that when you think about operational support, forty-eight percent of white constituents said they had a concern about operational support, while fifty percent of our racial, ethnic, community stakeholders said capital support. And what I wanted to point out to you all about this statistic is that typically what we've come to find is that when you split this by race, what this is telling us is that from, from an operational support standpoint, the white community doesn't expect that this won't get built. Their question is, will we have the funding to support it? So they're not stuck at, "Will this happen?" They assume it's going to happen, but they want to make sure that the funding is there. But for the communities of color, they're stuck at capital support, which is, their expectation is, the needs that they have don't get met. So they don't, they are very skeptical that it'll get built, and so they're stuck at, "Will this even happen?" So that's why you see this difference in terms of operational support and capital support along racial, ethnic lines, because the Black Indigenous community doesn't expect that the teen center will get built. So they're saying, "I don't think we're, the capital's going to be there." In terms of what should be focused on, again, depending on what demographic you pulled out in terms of a stakeholder, there was different emphasis, but the LGBTQ and the BIPOC respondents said diversity was really important. They also said that art, music, theater, and dance was important. Non-binary individuals said social and mental health. Teens said, again, a space to be able to chill out, and social and mental health, as well as recreation and sports. And of course, adults pretty much said, "I agree with everybody," and there should also be youth leadership and development. Another important thing to know is that when we did focus groups with the Juvenile Detention Center, as you might imagine, these are young people who have, who need second chance, and one of the things that they said was that, they all said yes to a teen center. They think that that potentially could be important in a youth, in a teen and a youth's life. And only one out of the five who actually completed the survey had had teen center experience. So we thought that was important to bring up. There's an avid class at West High School. There were about like forty-four students. We collected twenty-six surveys from them, but seven out of that twenty-six had had a teen center experience, but all of them said yes to a teen center. These were pictures of some of the events. I am so, how off time am I? Okay, yeah. So I think this piece here I would like to highlight on. So this is Heart's Ladder of Youth Adult Participation, and basically what this does is this calls out how involved and what's the level of engagement when it comes to youth and teens? And on the lower end of the ladder, it's basically adults are very much running, managing, and overseeing what happens, and youth are just there. When you get to the top of the ladder, youths are in the center, they're running, they're making the decisions, they're a partner, they're a collaborator. And one of the things that came up over and over again is that not only the interns felt like this process and this design was very much at the six, seven, eight level, this is also what the teens and youth are looking for in general. They really feel like if you're going to build a teen center, it really should be built with them in mind. And what's important to understand about this is if we think about our own lives as adults, we have places we can go as adults where we need to rest, get a break, relax, just be ourselves. And I think what we haven't really thought about very carefully is how marginalized our youth are, whether they're having a good life or not. As adults, we really marginalize youth. We don't think that they know what they're talking about. We don't think that they can make informed decisions. And, and so I think that's the tension that occurs between the ages of eleven and like twenty-one and twenty-four, is that it's a really hard time. They are going from being five years old and being taken care of to now they have to be independent, stand on their own two feet. Their brain has to go from this five-year-old brain to all of a sudden this adult brain, and between eleven and twenty-one, they are struggling to fit their body, to fit their brain, to meet the expectations that society has for them, and school and home and work may not be enough. Where is a space for teens to be? And one of the things that we learned in doing the survey is that the people who answered the survey said that they were not aware of any space in Fitchburg that is for teens. Eighty percent said that there isn't a space that they could think of that is for teens, where they can be themselves. They couldn't name it, they couldn't identify it. So only twenty percent, you know, of those who filled out the survey actually could come up with something, but most said, "I don't know of anything." And I think that that's just really important for this community that is growing by leaps and bounds, to be really thinking about, is that there needs to be a space for our youth where they can be themselves, where they can really be, be the host, be the designer, and be the creator of what that space looks like. It's for them, it's by them. There's a saying that says, "Nothing without us..." I said it wrong again. "Nothing about us without us." And I think it's really true with teens. We really need to let them be able to have the ability to manifest their own destiny, and I think that the teen center is a real opportunity to be able to do that. And most importantly, teens want to be heard and listened to, and they want to be able to have a choice. They also want to have another chance and the opportunity to be able to make mistakes and also have the opportunity to steer themselves out of those mistakes. So the things that this teen center should really think about and address, and these are things that came out of the surveys and the focus groups, is transportation, jobs, safety, diversity, community, family, and home. Like, this space has to be able to intersect all of that thinking. At the same time, teens want to experience friendship, fun, have mental and social health support, they want it to be inclusive, they want to belong, so this is where diversity comes in, they want to have music, they want to develop their leadership, they want a place to just chill out and be themselves, and they, they also want to be athletically engaged as well through recreation and sports. This is just some of the data to support what I just shared from the survey. Our ultimate analysis as Equity by Design in terms of like what needs to be focused on in terms of now and in the future, is that we really need to think about the safety of our teens and our youth. And safety, not as in policing, but safety as in emotional, mental, and welcoming. Like, how do we make teens feel safe in a space, right? And how can they be in control of that? Also, social and mental health, really making sure that there's resources and support at their peer level, but then also at a technical skill level, like having the appropriate skilled people who work with teens to be in that space. I've already talked about inclusion, belonging, and representation. It needs to be a welcoming space, not only for the teens, but for their families and for the community. And the structure and staff, and this came up through the survey, teens want to make sure that it's the right staff, the right people, right programming, but teens need to really be in the center of it, that they need to be a part of the staff, they need to be part of the volunteers, from the board, talking about design, they want to be a part of every single step of what it takes to build this teen center. So in conclusion, there is a strong grounded support for the teen center. It shows up over and over again through the data. Also, we need to acknowledge and center what teens value into the design, the build, and the programming. Interns were extremely valuable and instrumental in this whole process, and we really recommend that that design continue forward in the next phases of the project. We also think that this teen center could be really transformational for Fitchburg. This could be another gem, and Fitchburg has many. This can be another gem for Fitchburg in terms of design and structure and just the message that it sends to, to the community, right? It's one of cohesion and belonging and braiding together versus keeping apart. I think also too, thinking about this as an investment for overall sustainability is really important. Don't think of this as something that you have to check the box off. It's like, how do we continue to maintain and ensure that this continues to be the gem that it is? Whenever I go around Fitchburg, you guys really take care of your community, so this teen center should be taken care of too. And last but not least, continued youth engagement is integral in future phases and, and even throughout completion. Eli has told me that I am eleven minutes past what I was supposed to structure myself.
You're fine, you're fine on time. Don't worry about it.
Well, thank you, and thank you, sir. At this point, what I'd like to do is I've done the talking in terms of sharing what came from the data, but I wanted to give an opportunity for my planning team and also our interns to be able to have an opportunity to share their insight about what they experienced with this engagement. So Eli's right here, so I think I'm going to start with Eli, but, yeah, Taylor and Matias, if you want to come up and then we'll have the interns. I don't know if any of you as interns wanted to add anything to what I said? Okay, all right. Well, let's have the planning team come up, and I can step back and have them come up and speak.
Yeah, we have microphones on both ends, so as well, if that works.
Awesome. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us again. My name is Eli Sarofsky. I'm here representing the Healthy Kids Collaborative, and I'd just like to speak on my experience as a part of the planning team, just really show you what I really gained and the positive experience that was. So one thing I'd really like to highlight is, one thing that was really amazing about this experience was the interns. They facilitated this deeper learning of what I, they facilitated this deeper learning of what the teen experience is in Fitchburg and in Madison that I think is extremely valuable when considering what the teen center could be. The teens specifically brought their authentic selves. They were, they did not hold back in terms of what they wanted to teach us and what they wanted to share as well, which is very special. And I really connect this back, this is a sort of funny connection. I was one of the original members of the Teen Council at the Fitchburg Library right across the parking lot over here. And I think that being a part of this project really took me back to that time of remembering what it was like to be a teen in Fitchburg and having a say in the programming of what goes on in our city buildings. And so this is a special connection that I'd like to share as well. But then overall, just, I think that this teen center is really going to be a force to reckon with and really powerful for teens in the community because it is truly teen-centered, as the data showed. And I think that will just increase the meaning and the value of the center as well and just really allow us to center teen wellness and health. Specifically from the survey data, I think that's something that cannot be denied, is that teens really spoke up and shared their experiences, which will just increase the value. I think something else I'd like to say is that Healthy Kids is just really proud to be a part of something like this. Like, we are listening to the youth of the community as well as just the general community as well. And I think that adds such value to a project that centers youth because you're taking into consideration youth voice and just increasing the value of community health work in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. And hi, everyone. My name is Matias Lemos Castillo. I'm the engagement consultant on the side of the Equity by Design team. Actually, I'm here to emphasize a little bit more around the engagement work that we did. And actually, as somebody that came in on board, a little bit later in the game, I came on board on February. It was really apparent from the beginning that the teens were the ones centered and leading all the engagement work that we were doing here for this Fitchburg Teen Center. And it was really truly amazing experience to just see it because the adults in the room were really just the ones providing the skills, the knowledge, and you know, the expertise. Having done, having done field work for numerous years, and the teens were the ones really leading it. They were the ones creating the excitement, building the awareness, and getting that engagement from the community members, both on the teen side and on the community side. And it was really truly wonderful to see how they were setting deadlines for themselves, they were setting goals, and consistently after each deadline, they were meeting them and suppressing them. So really impressed us as a planning team, really impressed the community members because teens were centered. And I really want to emphasize that work, that, and the engagement work. It does take time, it's a long and hard process. And they really learned, they engaged with it. They engaged with the discomfort of, you know, going out and talking to people, going out and saying to friends, hey, can you fill out this survey? And really brought their full authentic selves to it. And I'm really proud of them because I would not be surprised if you see any of these folks in the future, you know, running the city, running the state, the county, or even nationally. They have a lot of insight and a lot of knowledge that we're glad we tapped into and had. They're, them releading the efforts essentially. I want to end with a really personal story as well. As someone that grew up in the south side of Madison and lived the majority of their time in Fitchburg, I really, I really saw myself in a lot of the stories that were being shared, a lot of the points that were being brought up and saying, hey, this would have been something that would have been really impactful. In my youth growing up and with my colleagues, a lot of the resources that the teens were sharing, we need to see this, we need to see this, or like this. I could have a personal story myself and been like, yes, that would have helped me. So I think really emphasizing the point, if this is an investment in our future, investment in our community, and really a place for Fitchburg to highlight on a national level. We're doing something different and we want to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Taylor, and I'm a community youth development educator for UW Extension. And a lot of what my work is, is just advocating for youth to be at the table, advocating for youth to have shared decision-making processes with adults. And a lot of time, it's, it's what's called a developmental mismatch where youth are expected, teens especially, are expected to be mature and be in leadership roles and act like adults, but then they're simultaneously undermined because of their age. And so it's really, really important to have them be at the table. And from a public health perspective, it's the basis of community-based participatory research where youth and community stakeholders are at the table designing public health efforts. And this is a public health effort, this community development space, where youth are designing and informing us, public officials, what they want this space to be for their mental health, for their physical health, for their education, for jobs and occupation. They're already identifying the social determinants of health, and it's just been an honor to be a part of this project. It's been an honor to advocate and mentor and support these youth because like we've said here, they'll, they're amazing. They, they inform our work so much where if it were just adults in the room, this teen center would look completely different. And I think the mentality of build it and they will come doesn't make any sense. It should be, if they build it, then they will come because they are designing this space themselves. They are describing and identifying how they themselves and their peers and their siblings and their friends see themselves in and out of the space. And that's a really important perspective. Youth are key stakeholders, they are experts of their communities. And so it has just been extremely honor, just an honor to be a part of this project and to work with organizations like Equity by Design and Healthy Kids Collaborative, who also value that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes.
All right, so next, what we're going to do is we're going to have the interns come up, and they prepared statements for all of you. They wanted to share their, we wanted to make sure that in their own words they could share with you what their experience was. So first, we'll have Abilene come up and do hers. And I had mentioned early on that there were a couple interns who couldn't make it, so some of the interns will read the statement prepared by the person who's not here as well, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abilene Espinoza Brito, and I will be a rising senior in the fall at Oregon High School. And my pronouns are she/her. I can verify enthusiastically that this internship was the best experience I have ever had working with the community. I enjoyed how we met twice a month and the way the mentors were so flexible with us. I am also truly thankful for the public speaking opportunities and exposure. I also enjoyed how safe of a space they provided us with and how they respected our ideas and they were open to new ideas as well. They would always, always ask, what do you guys think? This is a space for teens, for you guys, so you make the decisions. I've always been heavily invested in community work, and therefore, when I first heard of this opportunity from a contact at Centro Hispano, I couldn't pass on this opportunity. What really drew my attention was the way adults were asking teens what they wanted in the teen center, our center. It is very interesting, since this is not something that has ever happened to me before, and it was a new experience. One of the main objectives for me joining was to be surrounded by people who are different from me. I attend a predominantly white school, and this was one of the first times I had seen so many people of different, different minorities, races, and backgrounds, all in one space. Unfortunately, this is a common occurrence in community spaces where there is no diversity. I also wanted to join because due to COVID-19, a lot of teens were forced to stay home and not interact with fellow peers. I also wanted to join, oh, my bad. Unfortunately, a third of high school students also reported in having poor mental health during the COVID-19 pandemic. This space would provide a great place for teens to feel connected with peers and their community. The space would also be vital for teens. It will provide the chance to join workshops, help their community find jobs, and maybe internships, and more, any more recommendations that we will look for in the future. Thank you to this awesome group of mentors and fellow friends. We have paved the way for future teens to continue this journey and eventually enjoy this space, this shared space and experience. Oh, my bad. Okay, and then I will also be sharing another fellow intern's personal statement.
Hello, my name is Marcus Allen, and I'm going to be a freshman at Oregon High School. I joined this project because my dad told me about it, and I thought it sounded like it was going to be fun because I like working with people to reach a common goal. When we talk in our meetings, we try to get everyone's voices heard by going around in a circle and sharing our opinions on a certain topic. We developed our own teen survey so we could get more community input from teens. I felt like I have noticed that people will like a teen center because there is no building in Fitchburg or Madison that is made for teens besides the Boys and Girls Club. And I know that this center will change the future for Fitchburg because when you think of Fitchburg, you will think of a teen center and the resources it can provide for youth.
Hello, everyone. My name is Awa Fati. I recently graduated from Madison Memorial. My pronouns are she/her/hers. And the reason I was interested in joining this project was because I've never seen anything done like this before. What I mean by this is that Equity by Design actually got actual teens to get involved in the decision-making and agendas, and I don't see that happening often. And I think it brought a lot of value to this project as a whole. I definitely think the center will be more effective because it's exactly catering to what teens want, because we got to have a say. Equity by Design's idea to open this project up even more by having surveys makes this project even more meaningful to me because now you have teens all over Nane County, not just Fitchburg, giving ideas and perspectives, and that's also really important. I'm a big supporter of the idea that getting input from people of all walks of life enriches your ideas and makes you consider things that you would not consider otherwise. And I saw the need and value for this project, and I decided I wanted to be a part of it because of that reason. There's a lot of teens in Madison with no place to go, and a lot of them are going through things that they don't talk about. So I think it's really important to have a safe space where teens can do just that. I know this is something that would have definitely been useful to me in high school. Unfortunately, it wasn't, but for the people after me, this is a great resource. Also, in Madison, there's not a lot of places where teens can go that don't require like paying for something. So this center would also avoid that issue. I grew up in a community center as well, and looking back on it, it played a big part in the person that I became today. It gave me a lot of experiences and a lot of opportunities that I would not have otherwise. So this was definitely a great learning experience for me, and it was something I was passionate about because of where I grew up. The things I learned during this project are definitely applicable to things I want to do in the future. For example, I've done advocacy work before. I've worked with the Alzheimer's Association of Madison, and I was Memorial's VSU president my senior year. But I never had to work on this like personal level. I really had to like dig deeper in this project, and I had to actively talk to people and convince people why this was a good idea or like a good investment to the future youth of Fitchburg and Madison. The development of youth is very important, especially with teens, because I feel like we are the future. I believe as a community, we need to invest in our youth in order to invest in our community. I feel like this is a great way of doing that. Giving our future leaders a place to grow and be themselves is crucial in our upbringing, and it plays a huge role and factor in the people we become in the future. This would also be a great way of keeping kids out of trouble and introducing them to more productive opportunities that are actually worth their times. So I will leave you with this popular saying that you probably all have heard, but it takes a village to raise a kid. And that is essentially what this center will be doing for many families. It'll take a load off of parents and families to know that their kids are in good hands, are on good people who have their best interests at heart. So if you want to actively be in this process of bettering teens and raising them, this is your chance, and I promise you that you'll see benefits on a generational scale. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Nevea Grimmer, and I'm a 10th grader at Verona Area High School. I use any pronouns. What drew me into this project was the talk of a diverse staff and a genuine respect for the feelings of teens in the Fitchburg area. And I was not disappointed when I was hired as an intern and welcomed by a variety of different kinds of people and more appreciation of my ideas than I'd ever been offered before. As someone who wants to go into a career where I'm able to help as many people as possible, I'm delighted to have had the chance to start my career locally by learning about and speaking to my community. I got to explore my environment from a new perspective and think critically about the world we've created for teens. And in that process, I think I've been able to give myself and others the voice that we've needed. After listening to so many teens talk about feeling like they've had no space to be themselves, I realized that I'm not alone in feeling like a lot of adults have forgotten about me now that I'm getting older. Thanks to this experience, I don't feel as hopeless anymore now that I've gained some experience in public speaking and public engagement, along with it, along with some insight into what it looks like to begin a project like this one. I truly value the dedication to teens that everyone working on this project has shown me, and I look forward to the resources, support, and hope that it will bring to the students that come after me. Thank you. And then I'll also be reading for one of our interns who isn't here today. Hello, my name is Fatima Quinte, and I am a young intern. Next year, I am going to be a freshman at Verona Area High School. I heard about this youth internship from my principal. He asked me if I was interested, and I took the opportunity right away. The reason why I took it was because I wanted to be more aware and learn more about being behind the scenes of building a center. I also felt like it was a good opportunity for me to get to know the community. I also wanted to become better at public speaking. In our meetings and community outreach, we try to get everybody's voices to be heard. That's why we do open houses, surveys, focus groups, and public workshops. It's giving us ideas for the teen center. We've gotten so much great feedback and questions such as, what time will the teen center open and close at? Is it going to be open on weekends? And some of these questions we haven't even thought about. I believe with the help and support of the community, this teen center will come together and have a good impact on our community. And I am so glad that I had the opportunity to be a part of it.
Hello, I'm Ojosvi Pasache, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. And I'm a senior at Verona Area High School. When I first heard about this project, I was really excited because it was focused on the King James Neighborhood, which happens to be my old neighborhood. And being able to connect back to this community is something that I have wanted to do for a while. And this teen center internship seemed like a good way to do this. In addition, I really wanted to be in a space where the voices of marginalized communities were being centered. And this was another reason why I wanted to be a part of this. Over the course of this project, I have realized just how important youth voice is, as well as how overlooked it tends to be. Teens are often denied a chance to share their opinions because they are deemed too immature or they supposedly lack the necessary knowledge. However, it is evident to me that we are thoughtful people and innovative thinkers. When listening to the voices of other youth interns or the participants of our surveys and events, I always feel so empowered by their words. For example, I remember when a teen brought up the importance of health education and suggested that the teen center provide resources related to that. This wasn't something that had crossed my mind, so it was amazing to see just how insightful this individual was. Having a space where teens can have fun and grow as people is crucial because currently, youth lack much support from the community. With the teen center, teens would be able to freely express themselves, connect with new people, educate themselves about the world around them, and feel safe. These opportunities are vital for teen development, and they aren't always accessible. This is why the establishment of a teen center is so important. And then I will also be reading for another youth intern who couldn't come tonight.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Anderson. I'm going to be a freshman at Verona Area High School. I joined this project because one of my teachers told me about it, and I thought it was a great idea to have a space where teens could go and have fun and feel safe. I learned about the importance of Fitchburg having a place where teens could go and have fun and be safe. What impacted me the most was probably public speaking. It's definitely one of those things I struggle with, and this gave me a bit of a push. Talking to your friends is one thing, and talking to a crowd of strangers is a whole other thing. This project has helped me with brainstorming and being more empathetic to other, how others see things, such as the teens we worked with in our focus groups and the adults. As I was working as an intern, I always felt my voice was heard and that I could share my ideas with the group, and it was a welcoming workspace.
All right. So in their own words, thanks, everybody. Something that struck me as I was listening to the statements that were being made is that... is that essentially what we did to fulfill the requirements of the RFP is we sort of acted like what a teen center could be. Because you have adults that were supporting the youth. You had the youth making the decisions about what we were going to do, how we were going to do it. They were the ones that were going out and doing the engaging and the reaching and the talking. If you would have been able to see yourself, like, the energy and the activity that was happening in the room, we weren't pulling teeth to get them to be activated and to be interested and to do this work. The fact that we were able to get, you know, they themselves got over 200 surveys. They brought in focus group attendees themselves. That was not the adults. That was the youth. And I think that's the power of what a teen center can do, is that they can use their, as my husband and I used to say, we raised three kids. We want our kids to use their powers for good. And what we saw throughout this process is them using their powers in the way that they felt that they could be used for this process. And I think that that really could be manifested with the right structure and the right programming and with the community, that same thing can happen. And so, that's why, you know, Equity by Design really thinks that this could be very transformational for Fitchburg, that it is something, as Matias said, that could be at a national level that people could look at. Because centering teens is not what we typically do. Listening to them, letting them build it, is not what adults typically do. And so, I think this is just a really powerful, important moment for all of us. So, I really appreciate your time tonight and your focus and your energy on listening to what we learned. This will all be on paper for you to look at yourself. There were countless statements that, I mean, this is just just the surface in terms of the information that came from the whole process. So, hopefully, you'll have an opportunity to flip through that and see for yourself. But thank you very much. We really, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any if you have any from us.
Thank you very much, Annette. Wonderful presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you as well for your participation. Yes. Yes, thank you. And the report itself, when do you believe that the report will be out?
Yeah, it'll come, I'll submit it in August.
In August, then. Okay, very good. Do we do have some questions, Alder? Go ahead.
Well, I really want to thank you all for coming here and for the work that you've done on this. You're not the first group of young people who has come before this body, but you may end up being the first group who has come before this body and had your recommendations taken seriously. I've been involved in Fitchburg politics in one way or another since 1993. And we couldn't even get a skateboard park built back in 1998 or 1999. The idea of having a teen center is something that I've been talking about for a long time, over a decade. And now it seems like it's finally happening. I think all of you came here and you had good things to say. My son is 18. He just graduated from Oregon High School. So, I've been to a lot of the things that he's been involved in there, in the music programs. And I heard exactly what you said, that it's a very monochromatic school with, you know, a few other little hints of color here and there, but for the most part, I'm glad to see that we're engaging people who don't necessarily look like me. And so, thank you for coming. Thank you for reaching out. And I want to encourage all of you to stay involved in something, some way. Whether it's, you know, starting out running for an office like what many of us up here hold. It's a lot of work. You have to hear a lot of complaints. It's, the people don't usually call you to tell you, "Hey, everything's going great. We're really happy." They usually call to tell you, you know, "My neighbor's dog is out of control and I want you to do something about it." But, you know, we need people like you. And hearing you speak tonight gave me a little bit more hope for the future than what I had before this meeting started. You know, my generation, I'm 57 years old, my generation is leaving you a bit of a mess. And I hope that you will be able to clean it up because it's going to take some innovative thinking. It's going to take some different ways of viewing people. And I really appreciate the idea, Annette, that you brought up about thinking, maybe it was one of the other people who mentioned that this type of thing should be viewed as a public health issue. It's not, it's not just we're going to have a little club that people are going to go to and play some games, but it really is an important part of a public health system that this country doesn't have. So, I hope that all of you will continue to work toward that goal. And, you know, we need people. It's not just, it's not enough that you have your own ideas. While that's good, you need to be able to present those ideas to other people and convince them that they are good ideas. And I think what each of you said tonight was certainly convincing to anybody who might have been watching. So, thank you.
Yes, Alder Rodafrada, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I want to thank Annette, Eli, Matias, and the rest of the planning committee team and also all the interns. Thank you. Gracias for your presentation. It was great to hear all of you. I am fully supportive of this teen center from day one. I had the opportunity to attend one of the open houses, a meeting in the spring and I was very, you know, surprised by the level of engagement of all of you, the young people in the room. So, I want to say thank you very much for your engagement to this project, participation, and continue moving forward with this project because I think it's an investment for our community. As Annette mentioned, this one could be a transform, the community where we live. We can make Fitchburg a better place for all of the young people. So, thank you very much. Gracias.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Yes, Alder Maldonado?
Yeah, and I'll just say that with the report coming out, beyond the value what it could be and what's kind of coming in the future, just the value of the report itself is incredibly useful to the city. You know, we have neighborhood plans. We have strategic documents throughout our website and those documents inform policy. And they also are documents that people from other municipalities can look to, to be able to, you know, inform their work. So, just by the fact that this will be a publicly available document to everybody, you know, is by in and of itself worth every dollar just in the level of innovation that was in this process. So, again, thank you. I appreciate you leading this work and, like you said, expectations have been exceeded.
Yes, Mayor Richardson?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work. Very impressive group of interns and it's great to see all the work that you put into this. It's very clear that you spent a lot of time and effort into it. And so, just, you know, thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing the report.
Very good. If there's no further comments, again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you to everyone. All right. With that, the next item on the agenda, announcements. Our next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for August 24th, 2022. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a second. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are officially adjourned at 9:06 PM. Thank you.